Today is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Call to order of the Standish Municipal Center, the Town Hall for the Town Council. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Where is the flag? One moment. Please at parade rest.
Somebody must have borrowed it.
It's probably for Memorial Day.
I didn't notice that it wasn't there.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
This is unacceptable, waiting for me to come in here.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. First call to order, business is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for your patience while we completed that. May I ask the clerk to please call the roll?
Mr. Deacon.
Here.
Gaba.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Lepurkis, excuse me. Macri.
Here.
Carmelo.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you, and we do have a quorum, correct?
Yes.
Is the first matter of business executive session. This is for the Appointments Committee.
Yeah, so let me.
Minutes of previous meetings, approval of the May 14th, 2024 Council Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion, we approve the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of waiving are unanimous, thank you. Petitions and communications, are there any?
I have none this evening, other than there's an item of in front of you that I shared with you yesterday that they would need to be added to the agenda by unanimous consent. It's an emergency amendment to the Standish Town Code, Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, regarding weight restrictions on roads.
So there was an event where the culvert is being replaced, and because of the nature of the repair, it's serious and special action is required. There are available in the lobby to anyone who wants photos of the matter that you can look at, including some showing that the culvert is in serious shape and needing action. All those are available. Do I have any comment from members of the council regarding this?
Do we need a motion to get it added?
I'd like to make a motion to add this order number as 69-24.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, if there's no discussion, we could move to a vote. Do we need a show of hands, okay?
Show of hands is just fine, thank you.
Okay, let's have a show of hands, and you have unanimous, thank you. Do we need to do this first, or we can do this later, which order?
That would be at the end of the, you added it to the end of the agenda.
Okay. So other petitions, communications, you say you have none?
There are none.
Are there any from the public? We have one communication to share from a former state representative. There is the correspondence regarding the, Richard Randall of Randall's Orchards is being presented with an award from the Eastern State's Exposition Agricultural Adventures Award. And on June 11th, at 2:00 PM, there will be a presentation made for his effort to promote the preservation of his land. The New England Exposition, Big E, will be presenting their Agricultural Adventures Award to the Randall family in memory of their father's accomplishments and commitment. This award is presented annually to a farm in one of our New England states with their lifetime achievements in agriculture. These annual awards have continued since 1953, and Maine has two farms recognized in 2024, the second one being in Dresden. So if anyone in the public wishes to attend, you're encouraged to do so. No other comment? No other public presentations, we'll move to the report of the Town Manager.
There, I have yet to meet with staff this month because the meeting was moved a month early. I will mention tomorrow, the torch run is running through Standish for Special Olympics. I'll be running just over four miles with some of our deputies. We meet, the run starts at Aroma Joe's and goes to the Gorham Fire Station. 7:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Anything else from the Town Manager? No. Public hearings?
The public hearing this evening is Order Number 47-24, Amendments to Standish Town Code, Chapter 245, Solid Waste Recycling and Management, Article 1, Recycling and Disposal of Solid Waste. The town of Standish hereby ordains that Chapter 245, Solid Waste Recycling Management and management of the code of the town of Standish is here be and is hereby amended as follows. Additions are underlined, deletions are struck out. Chapter 245, Solid Waste Recycling and Management, Section 245.3, Definition, solid waste hauler, local, a person who receives compensation for bringing residential solid waste to the Standish Transfer Station for a maximum of 12, excuse me, 15 dwelling units. All dwelling units serve, must be in the town of Standish, and have a current vehicle permit. Section 245-9, License Application, An application for local solid waste hauler license under this article shall obtain the following information. One, name, address, and annual vehicle permit number of the applicant, and list of households for which the applicant will be collecting solid waste, including each household's current annual vehicle permit number, and an agreement to abide by the terms and conditions of this article. Section 245.13, Deposit of Solid Waste, All solid waste haulers shall deposit solid waste at an approved facility other than the Standish Transfer Station. And actually, this next section is what's being changed in this ordinance. A person hauling their own residential solid waste and local solid waste hauler shall deposit it at the town disposal facility. And then, Section 245-14, Vehicles Used by the Solid Waste Hauler, trucks or other vehicles used by the non-local solid waste hauler shall be of a compactor type, watertight, and with an enclosed cargo space. And that's the only changes in the ordinance.
Thank you. Any comments from members of the council? No comments, members of the council? Any comments from the public?
Anthony Folsom, $85 for it. I've been pretty consistent on what I feel the transfer station should be used as. I do have kind of concern, if we do allow these haulers to come in, are they going to be able to have more than one route? Like if, if I was a hauler, my wife, can she have a route? And I take care of that, and a family member, so someone could have three or four things? I was wondering if that was even thought of, if one hauler could have multiple family members that have a route and keep doing it 15 a day for three family members or whatever. I don't know what the cost is for license. Did you mention that just now, Mary?
I did not.
What, what is the fee going to be? Is it still going to be $100 or $500? Have we come up with that figure yet?
To be set by the Finance Committee, it hasn't, it first has to pass before it goes to Finance Committee.
Okay, so we're not sure what the amount is yet. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any response about whether multiple licenses would be allowed for extended family?
By this, by this, it would be, if it was two different people, they were still subject to the same rules.
I, yes. I'm not sure if I like the idea that five, four sons and a wife, they can all get these. I don't know if that was our intent to let that happen, or was it of the council? I was assuming we were taking care of small people that had the 15, 20, and that was it. And just, I'd hate to have someone come in here and just all of a sudden take advantage, same trucks. Would a, would a truck have to be registered to each one of them visually? Could they use the same truck, like different people?
Well, for the person to get a hauler sticker, it would have to be showing that it's their vehicle, in my, my opinion, the way it's set up, or it's that they reside in Standish. So, I mean, it's not limited to household, there's, there's nothing to limit it, but...
But each individual to get a permit would have to have their own vehicle with a sticker on it. They couldn't borrow my truck.
Couldn't have the same sticker for the same family. So whatever the fee set by the Finance Committee, that other person would have to pay another fee beyond that to manage that list.
And all of the trash that they would be hauling would be from Standish residents, is that correct?
Correct, so they have to provide a list of the residents they're hauling. Those people also have to have a transfer station fee paid, and whatever the Finance Committee determines the fee would be for the residential hauler to be, the residential hauler would have to pay that.
So, so for saying, let's just say the fee's going to be $500. If you're saying a husband and wife do it, separate trucks, whatever, it's $1,000. Or could we say that it would be only limited to one per address, one hauling permit per address?
I think we'd have to go back and do an ordinance change if that's what you want.
No, I was just, no, I was just wondering, like, so right now, we'd be making more money because we're going to charge them twice.
Correct.
Any other comment as a follow-up to that? No, please state your name.
What item on the agenda are you talking about? I can't hear you to hear. Say nothing about back there. These might be nice for the TV, because I watched Glass Wake, and it worked. But the acoustics in this room, you need the amplifier somewhere back here. More of you talked, and I don't know a word you said, and I don't know where I am to respond.
Thank you for sharing that. We are on the initial new business, we're, about the hearing on public comments regarding the proposed charter amendment to qualification for residents whose property... I'm sorry, we're not on that. My apologies, I have trouble with my eyes.
47-24, 47-24 is what we're talking about.
Yes, thank you.
47-24.
I thought, but I couldn't.
Yeah, I miss.
I apologize, I have trouble with my eyes right now and reading, and I'm glad that Ben was able to clarify what item that we're on.
The one you want to talk about. It's the one you want to talk about.
Yeah, but I don't know, if I can't hear you guys, I don't know how to, we talk.
So, if I may, you are welcome to sit up front if you would, to, in order to hear us, so, and also, to anyone that has a disability, if you need any adjustments in the meeting, please let us know beforehand so we can make appropriate accommodation. You're welcome to sit close.
Two other people that left last month's meeting, when I did, that could not hear, and that's why they left.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I urge the public that the town is very interested in making sure all of its citizens can learn of and participate in our Town Council meetings. Myself, I have a background in civil rights, so I take it very personally if I hear that someone is feeling they're not being given appropriate accommodations or adjustments to participate. We do make it public as part of our meeting notices, that if people need assistance in getting ability to access or participate, to let us know. So in the future, if you need particular assistance, please let...
Something had just come up, I have a, I have a recent, and it hasn't recurred, infection in my ears, and it hasn't cleared up.
So whether temporary or permanent, you're always willing, always able to speak to us, or the Town Clerk to tell, tell us of what your need is, and we'd be glad to work with you to make an appropriate adjustment, such as sitting close.
Point of order. We need to get into a mic, because this is televised, so Ken, can you go to the mic up there so you can talk, because people at home can't hear you. So there's a one-way conversation. Could you go up to the mic there and speak? Because they can't hear you at home. If you could stand at that mic right there, there we go, thank you.
But you may have to walk over here to talk to me.
I can do that.
We just need to use the mics, pull them close.
If I, if I read this thing's right on the hauler stuff, our customers have to own a vehicle and have a dump sticker? What about the person that's 94 years old, can't get out of his house, doesn't, can't drive, and doesn't have a vehicle? What do you do for that person?
I agree with you.
We, we take each situation under what it is, and sometimes it does, there's special arrangements made for those people. We work with the people, we're here to work with them. Every situation's different, so we have to, it all depends on the situation.
All right, so what do you expect me to do with my customers? How is that going to work?
If they have a vehicle, it would be assigned to the vehicle, and we will take each situation depending on, they will be able to dispose of their trash, but they will have to pay a fee. It, I can't say whatever situation it is, each one varies from person to person.
Well, yeah, everybody's willing to pay the fee, they just want to know how it's going to work. But, but I say, if, if they've got to have a car with a sticker on it, and they don't have either...
Like I said, in the past, I can do sometimes, sometimes we have to assign it to the individual, given the situation. Like I said, we've done that in the past. It all depends on the situation, it changes from person to person on what the given situation is. We don't, the goal is to work for, work with the townspeople to make sure that they can dispose of their trash, but we also need some accountability.
Does Dave and I have to get this information and bring it here? Or are you going to require the people to come to the dump and get a sticker? Or the Town Hall and get a sticker?
It's all given on the situation, Ken. Like I said, we're willing to work with the people sometimes. If I have to drive to their house and work, take that to them, I'm willing to do that. I'm here to help serve the public, but I can't tell you for everything what it will be.
Well, it's just that, this is all happening, and nobody's talked to me.
I did come and talk to you prior to, that's how we came up with the number 15.
Just started off, yeah, but you haven't followed up?
It's gone through the process right here.
Thank you, are there any other public comments, please?
Anthony Folsom, $85 for it. What would justify someone losing their access to the thing, as far as abuse? Would it be, if someone figured out that they were hauling too many people or stuff like that, would they instantly lose their right to go down there, or what do we have for...
There is in the ordinance, not listed this, but in the transfer station ordinance, that if there's a violation, that your, your rights can be terminated by the Town Manager.
Well, we've had things on the ordinance now for 20 years on the books, and it hasn't been filed, right, for the most part. So that's, I'm just trying to get this, so it's being taken care of right, handled right. So, I just didn't know if there was a set thing, that if you abuse it, you're going to lose your license, you're not going to be able to be able to haul it.
It happened for an individual, same thing can go, it would apply to them.
It can happen to a single person, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other follow-up by council?
No need. I just got one thing, I'm not sure if we clarified, we talked, I danced around this a little bit. Are we going to let more than one household have a solid waste permit? Or are we going to have one residence for one solid waste permitted? Or are we going to allow numerous people in one house to come and get a permit to haul?
I believe the question was answered that anyone who wishes a license would need a vehicle registered in their name.
And it says that in the ordinance, that they need a vehicle, or they want a solid waste?
The sticker goes to the vehicle, that is how it is set up. But like I said, in past, we have had special circumstances that we look at, what can we do? And sometimes, sometimes it's not to a vehicle.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. I hope that we don't make more of this than necessary if there are problems as we go forward. I'm sure the town officials and the Town Manager and the council would be willing to readdress this if there are continued issues or concerns that need adjustment. Any other comments by council? Can we move to a roll call?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Carmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes.
And would you please sign?
Thank you. If I may ask, I have some trouble reading. If you would, instead of my reading, could you announce the next item?
Oh, sure, okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, the next item on the agenda is, um...
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Mr. Parmalo, do you have any...
I have none. I did attend the Dow Cemetery Committee meeting. I spoke with them for ten or fifteen minutes on the cemetery committee the other night.
Did the cemetery committee have a meeting? I didn't realize that.
Dow Cemetery, it was actually in the, it was posted on our website for...
For some reason, I missed that, I apologize.
Reserving the room there. I, I only spent a few minutes because I had another commitment, but I just told them what we were doing and what John was doing. We were talking about maybe some help this summer from John's crew with the new dump truck. And I told them, you know, we're gonna try to work with more cemeteries and try, try to find out more of their needs. But it was a, uh, just a meeting of their executive board. I think they meet once, uh, I don't wanna say how many times a year they meet, but I just happened to see it on our website. It was on the calendar, on the resident calendar on our website.
That meeting was not the council cemetery committee, but another group?
This was, no, this was the Dow Cemetery Committee. I've been, I've been meeting with people from cemeteries when I can, and they're just having a meeting, so I attended it the other night. And they were...
I would hope that in the future, if not with this sitting council, that with a future sitting council, there can be an official meeting of the council cemetery committee at some point. I apologize, uh, recently I've been getting some treatment and some of my vision issues make it difficult to read the things like the town calendar, I, I missed that, uh, that event. But thank you, I'm glad you were able to attend.
To my knowledge, the cemetery committee of the town of Standish hasn't met in ten years as a... I don't know if there is a committee, I think I'm on it, you're on it. And I think we only normally meet when there are issues. If John had an issue with cemeteries or someone brought it forward, I don't think we actually set up it. Because I, I've been on it a year and I haven't, uh, heard of any meetings that I missed. I happened to see this on the resident calendar on our website, the Standish website. The other night it was posted on the calendar. And I, actually, that's why I come down here. But it wasn't no hidden agenda, I just come down to say hi and let them know that we do have a committee and we would help them if out down the road is needed, you know? Not, not a big deal.
I don't wanna belay this point, but there is a Standish council committee for cemeteries to which you were appointed as chair and I as a member, we have not yet met. And it's my hope that at some point we might have a meeting. There has been some buzz within the community as reflected at a prior council meeting or, uh, where there was discussion that, uh, some of the, uh, social, uh, media people have been talking about cemeteries. And I just add, there are some concerns. There are prior concerns that were raised about issues with the Portland Water District maintaining cemeteries within their control, uh, which was not done. And we've, we've taken steps to address, uh, maintaining those. Uh, if there's no further comment, we'll get further committee reports.
Finance, uh, finance committee meets next week, so nothing to report today.
Thank you. Committee is, uh, there's no further meetings. Uh, if I may, uh, I did speak with the clerk about the handling of committee meetings, especially committees that might be deemed, uh, significant or important to the town during the period when there is an election and the new council has not appointed a chair or the new chair has not completed committee assignments. Could you speak to that?
Um, sure. So there are, um, some standing committees that, um, it would be an advantage if members were appointed. That would be the appointments committee, the capital improvements committee, uh, the finance committee, and ordinance committee. Um, I had brought that forward to, um, Mr. Leclerc as well. Said he would, um, look into that, I'm not sure that he touched base with...
Um, he, we, uh, well, I guess we can move forward to, um, the committee report. We did have a meeting this evening, but, uh, Mr. Leclerc was ill and was unable to come, so I don't have an update particularly on that. Would we need to move an order forward for July for those appointments?
Um, so, uh, the dilemma is this, is that there is a scheduled capital improvements meeting for July ninth, which is the council meeting. So, um, i- if that could maybe be considered this evening at least to, um, that forward. I think that, um, my understanding is that ordinance committee maybe is not meeting again until...
There is no planned meeting at this time.
No planned meeting, so that one could be paused. Mr. Giswoldi, do you, finance committee, do you need...
Yep, we would be meeting July eighth.
July eighth, yeah.
I think we would have, um, two members for a quorum with the existing council attorney. So is there an order this evening for Council Leclerc was supposed to move forward?
Typically added to the grand appointments order.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess we will discuss that when that comes up on the, on the agenda.
Okay, uh, continuing with committee reports?
Capital improvements did not move, did not meet this month.
Personnel finance, I mean, uh, personnel, we didn't meet.
Thank you, is there any other, uh, committee reports? None? If not, we'll can move toward the next items, the consent calendar, is that right?
Uh, yeah, there are no items on the consent calendar this evening.
No items on the consent calendar that leaves us with unfinished business?
Uh, there's no items of unfinished business. The next item is new business. First order is sixty dash twenty-four, approved warrant for annual town meeting. Ordered that the warrant for the annual town meeting is approved by the town council. Said meeting will be held on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at nine AM at the Standish Municipal Center. There's attach, uh, a copy of the warrant attached to the order. And additionally, the, uh, the town meeting will be held here in council chambers.
Comments?
I just have one, if people have issues with the town budget, this is the meeting to go to. Show up, it's important. If you feel strongly about something that's in the budget or would want something or vote against something, this is your time to come vote on the budget, so.
What time?
Uh, nine AM Saturday morning, June fifteenth. So a week, uh, about ten days from today on Saturday at nine AM, right here.
Thank you, no other comments on that? Public comments? No public comments? The next item is...
Um, let's, uh, roll call on that, did you...
Okay.
Yep, Deacon?
Yes.
Gabba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Parmalo?
Yes.
And Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order, um, number sixty-one dash twenty-four, call for public hearing to be held on July ninth, twenty twenty-four, to hear public comments regarding the placement of a referendum question on the municipal ballot at a special town meeting referendum vote on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, for a proposed charter amendment to address the qualifications of those residents whose property is located in more than one of the four representative areas in Standish to serve in, as an area representative on the town council or planning board. Ordered that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, during the regular town council meeting to hear public comments regarding the placement of the following referendum question on the municipal ballot to be presented to the voters on November fourth, twenty twenty-four, at a special town meeting referendum vote for proposed amendments to the Standish Charter. Question one, shall the municipality approve a charter amendment summarized below? Summary of amendments, the proposed charter amendment will add language to two existing sections of the town charter to allow an individual who resides on a parcel of land that is located in more than one of the four areas of Standish listed in section two oh four of the Standish Charter to be considered a resident of each area and seek election to the town council or planning board as a area, as a representative to any of the areas in which the individual resides. The purpose of the proposed amendments is to address the ambiguity that exists under the current language, which does not address the situation. The complete text of the proposed amendment is on file at the town clerk's office. It's also attached to this amendment, and I can expand on that if you'd like.
I'll, I'll just add that the, uh, when the line was drawn in some areas, there were uninhabited areas of town, wooded areas. Since then, uh, the town has been expanding and growing, and there were developments in areas which had otherwise been uninhabited, so to speak. So the line goes through a development, uh, that is be, uh, under construction or being constructed. And as such, certain people, it's not clear where they should be. And so this measure, although it becomes an official action, is by the consensus of the discussion, I believe, perhaps intended to be a short-term addressing of the situation. And as we go forward, the council would need to appropriately consider it, uh, to fine-tune or change or otherwise amendment to, uh, address any long-term concerns about, uh, which areas people should be, uh, identified as being a part of. Anything else that you'd like to add?
That's it?
Yes.
I am, would they, so would, they're gonna have each area? Or do they have to decide what area that they belong to? And when they decide, when this goes through, are they, you're gonna contact them and ask them which area they belong, wanna belong to? Um, and then are they forever in that area? Or can they switch at any time? They can switch at any time?
That's my understanding. So during that term on the council or planning board, they would have to remain as a member of that area?
So...
No, I, I, I get it. Um, just so them, they could switch to the next area the next time?
Yeah, I would believe that's correct. Although I would state that in the long term, I believe the council, uh, through the, uh, municipal planning tenure document that were underway or in some other action, that the town would wanna think more clearly about this. This is, uh, we're presented with, we wanna make sure that this is, we don't deny anyone their rights while we're figuring out how to address this long-term. So we have this as a solution that's in one sense permanent, but we recognize that we probably wanna revisit it to make sure we make a final and well-thought-out reasoned, uh, proposal as to how to address this.
Excuse me, we're supposed to have public comment first and then discuss it for the council?
Oh, sorry.
I don't wanna get the cart before the horse.
Is there any public comment? Please?
Maury Hill, uh, Wildridge Road, I hadn't heard about this, but, um, basically, uh, what happens to your voting address? I mean, isn't that where you decide where, um, you are actually legally domiciled?
No, when you vote, uh, for council, for example, you vote for them no matter where you live in town. You're, if you want to run as a representative from a certain area, you must be a resident of that area to run. And this addresses that issue. Is that correct?
Yeah, in, in this case, we have a property, we, this line goes through the middle of certain properties.
Mm-hmm.
So do you say, well, which side of the property line does the house on? What if the house lives, is on that line?
Mm-hmm.
And is it the front door, is it the side door? What, how do you, how do you make that distinction? This is a really good short-term solution for the four to seven houses that fall into this that is gonna make sure that they have the right to run and not, and, and, and not cause them problems. The long-term solution that they were talking about is the idea of reforming these lines to be in the middle of roads. That's where it is for most of the town. And so it's very clear, it doesn't pass through a house. In this case, there were no houses before, now there are a couple of houses. And so this makes it clear that if they come to run for the planning board or the council, that they get a choice. And, and, yeah, they can choose, and it's a benefit for them theoretically to live in these four to seven houses for a few years. But it's, it makes it clear what can happen. I have no idea who these people are and if they would ever think about running for any of these places, but it's just try to make it clear.
Sure. So I, I, I was just really, you know, seeking clarification on, so, so when do you think the boundaries would change? You know, the, to, to, uh, follow the roads as opposed to the, when do you think that will happen? Only, only because, you know, you might get to the end of a three-year term and, you know, you might be like, well, it might be more advantage, more of an advantage to be in this one. So are we saying you can in fact decide at the end of your term that you wanna run from this area versus this area?
I, I don't think that the areas two and three is the area in question, Maury. So, and I, I know that Mr. Deacon explained it, when it was originally, um, created, it went from the end of, um, Oak Hill Road, I believe, up through the woods, through a pond, up to the, um, Baldwin Town Line. There's been a subdivision built right in the middle of that. As Mr. Deacon mentioned, um, I don't know if, if even in that area, if there's a, a way to do it on a road. If you wanna look at the map, you can, can see that it's a very distinct area. And I'm gonna say, um, I need to look real quick. I do not believe, so area two, um, expires in twenty-six, and area three expires in twenty-five. So someone would, if, if it's, um, that scenario, they would have to resign from one seat to run in the other seat. I don't know that that would, would happen. Um, there's been, as he mentioned, there's some long-term talk about, um, looking at a different plan, but this is, this is a quick plan. Right now, if somebody comes to, in one of those homes and wants to run for office, staff here has no opportunity to, to select for them. You know, we don't, we don't have that. This is to, to clarify for staff that the, the person would make the, the selection.
One of the things that came up in the earlier discussion is that of the four town council districts, for example, there's no specific requirement, that it be one person, one vote, or they be equal population numbers or within a certain, uh, uh, statistical difference? It is, there is no requirement for that. However, it's our sense that we would probably like to have districts that are more or less comparable in population size. And that's something that could be considered by the appropriate town officials and departments. There are ways, I believe, from the earlier discussion, where they might be able to determine the rough, uh, 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 population size per, per town council district. That's all something that could be considered, to think about what the legal obligations are if we are indeed not required to have, uh, districts of, of comparable population size. What parameters must we follow? Uh, and so we're making a short-term, this works, it's not gonna affect a lot of people, may not affect anyone. And it gives us a time to more properly, fully assess and, and review it and consider it.
Uh, would that come before the ordinance committee, I presume, to change those based on the population or...
Um, so I can tell you what I know briefly. The, uh, planner has said that there's a, a way that he can perhaps define population throughout the town. Uh, the town attorney said that it could, the town council could appoint an ad hoc committee to review and bring forward a recommendation to that. The thing is with, uh, amendments to your charter, the timing of where you present that to the voters is important because it requires at least a thirty percent turnout based on the last gubernatorial election for that, um, amendment to pass, if it's, if it's ratified by the voters. If only fifteen hundred... If only 1,500 people turn out, it may not pass.
Thank you.
I would think that if it was gonna be brought forward, it would be at the next general election, two, two years from now. They could work towards that as a goal.
Well, thank you, just for the clarification.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anyone else from the council?
Yep.
I, this district was established, how many years ago? Fifty, seventy, 100 years ago? And everybody has lived by them. No one's ever complained about what district they're in and jumping over to another district. Sometimes you hate to see changes when it's working fine. This boundary here, if we have to, if we've got a boundary going through a house, I think that they should decide what district they want to be in, one or three, or two or three. And that's, from there on, that household would be in that district. I don't think for one minute we go do a charter change that says certain people in town can choose A or B district, where the other 9,800 people can't choose that. And they have to be in a district to run for a council seat or a planning seat. So if we're gonna do this, I think it's pretty simple. It's six or seven houses, I think we notify them, explain the situation, and they should decide what district they're gonna be in. So they can't like, oh, I lost the planning board this year, but next year I can go over and, or actually, district, council seats, you can say, oh, I didn't win this year, now I'm gonna jump over to District Three and run. I think it just, it might never happen, because as, people voting in this town, most of them probably don't understand the district they're in, and I understand they all vote for the same person, that's fine. But I don't think for one minute that a certain group should get to choose what district they want to be in to run for a public office. And if they do want to choose, I think they choose, and then they're locked into it until we make changes years down the road. That's my suggestion.
Would you like to propose an amendment?
I want to hear what the others have to say.
Well, there could be an amendment, for example, that would designate the entire new community to be in one district or another. There are reasons.
I don't think we want to go there. I think we're talking about five houses now, not 200 houses.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm in agreement. I think that, you know, if we said five house, seven houses or whatnot, and we notify them, tell them of the situation, they make, they have to make a decision, and then they stay with it, because I know what you're saying, like, one council seat is up in '26, the next one in '25 or whatnot. But let's say that person decides they want to run in '25 for District Two, whatever, and then they lose, but they get to run again the following year in the other one. You know what I mean? So why not make them, somebody, nobody else gets that opportunity. If they, once they make a decision of what area they want to be in, they should just, you know, that's the area they're in, which is fine, you know? Let's put it out there, hey, you want to be in two or three? We'll be in two. Boom, done. Just my opinion.
Keep it simple. So do you have an amendment to propose?
Let's see what else.
I think that sounds simple, and that can be really easy. The problem is, is do we ask them now? What happens if someone moves into that household? What happens if somebody changes? Does that stay the same for that house forever, no matter if the house sells?
Why not?
I mean, you, you run into all of these questions, and it's really questions that the town clerks have to deal with. It's not really anybody else. We already, everyone has the opportunity to run for these seats, whether they want to run in a district, or they want to run for the open seat. There is an open seat every single year. So everybody already has that option. It, for the .0001% of the people, it, somebody may find a loophole and may be able to run for District Two one year, and then District Three one year. The chances of that happening are, yeah, very, very small. So, but what this does is it makes it clear. And it's a very clear thing, it eliminates the questions, and that's what I think is the most important thing to do. If you guys have a better idea that is gonna handle all of the craziness, let's hear it. But I think this makes sense for a short-term solution to this.
Sarah?
I think it's important to remember, you know, what Mary had just said, is if someone walked into the office today and was interested in running for any seat in the town, that they would not know what to do with them, and they would not have an answer, and that someone's right to run would be in question, because they wouldn't know that. And so to protect the ability for our townspeople to participate in local governance, you know, I think, like Ben is saying, that a temporary solution is better than leaving our town clerk's office with no guidance at all.
Yes. I definitely feel for Mary and the town clerks, and this is a sticky situation, but I would, I don't feel it's right to change the entire charter, or even if it's a temporary charter, for a .001% of whatever percentages of the town, where everybody else wouldn't be affected. So we're changing something for six people? I don't think that's, I don't think that would be right.
This may have future implications as property is developed elsewhere.
Sure. And I think a long-term solution should be, maybe, maybe we completely abolish all the areas, just have everybody at large, we completely change the lines.
And that would be a charter review, which would be many years of, you know, you have to build like a charter committee. The charter committee has to review the entire charter. Similarly, to our, you know, comprehensive plan, it takes multiple years. So then we would again be leaving our town clerk's office and the people in those areas with several years of not having any answer at all.
It becomes significant in time, in that if anyone decides to run, the time period to file, gather signatures for nomination and have the election are limited in time. And to say that it might be adjudicated is quite potentially there. And so to avoid controversy and to make it simple, this was proposed as a way to reasonably address it, knowing that there might be a need to better address it through the Charter Commission or something long-term, to, to fully assess all the ramifications that should be considered. Phil, did you want to say something more?
I think that, I would like to make a motion, and I'd like to be heard of, that if someone decides they're gonna run for an Area Two seat in this district or whatever, that at that point, that they would be committed to that district forever after. So they can't lose one year and run the next year. I know that Mr. McCree stated that there's open seats available, but I'm gonna be honest with you, the open seats are way harder to get elected to than a district seat. A lot of our district seats don't, a lot of them didn't have, don't want to have people even run against them. I think the planning board this year doesn't have anyone running against them in a district seat. But anyways, I guess my motion would be that once the person decides what district they want to be in, if they're running for town office, that they have to commit to that district for the time that they're in that house. That way, we eliminate them jumping back and forth from one district to another.
And if the person moves and someone else moves in?
Then we would go through the same process. If that person wanted to run in District Two one year, then they couldn't run in Three the following year. So it always continue on that way.
Sarah?
I was.
I mean, I would say, I think that, you know, I agree with, with Phil, that, you know, it might be, you know, worth it to have some clarification on that, that piece in this document. And I don't know, does that need to be returned to the town attorney for review as a matter of process?
Does returning it to the town attorney affect our ability to take action? Is there a time constraint?
I think there is, but I think if Mr. Parmelo wants to make a motion, this is kind of twofold. It's bringing this question forward.
I bring this question forward tonight, but I just want this saying that if they run for a District Two seat, then they're committed to that seat. And if someone else moves in the house, if they run for a seat, then they would have to commit to that district forever after. That way, it protects someone from, like I say, and we say it's not gonna happen, but the first time it does, we'll all be back.
I would second that.
So it would be just a simple amendment, you know, to this order.
So there is a motion and a second. Did you want to say anything further?
No, I was getting clarification, but he made it simple, so.
Does the clerk understand the motion?
Yeah, so a move by Parmelo, seconded by Mr. Gardner. And Mr. Parmelo's motion was to, once an area's seat has been committed, it must remain in that area. Is that the gist of what you wanted?
Exactly what I wanted to say, thank you.
So, did you want to vote?
Clarification, so this is still gonna be a change to the charter.
Correct.
So there was an argument about we shouldn't change the charter, but even that is changing the charter. Number two, if it is based on the individual themselves, not on the house. So if a husband and wife, the husband wants to run for District Two, that person is stuck in District Two, the wife could run for District Three, that person is now in District Three. So it's up to the town to keep track of what district they've picked.
Like you said, it probably never happened, but if it does, you'd say, okay, Bill, you lost this year in two, you can't run in three next year. You're committed to two forever after. But if his wife wanted to run the opposite seat, then he could. But yeah, it's just, an individual couldn't keep jumping back and forth between districts. So that's, I guess Mary caught it in a nutshell. So I guess we'd have to vote on it.
Any other council comments? I would like to offer an opportunity to the public to comment on the.
We have a motion, then we have to vote on it?
Yeah, I think we have a motion, and second, you can't ask a public comment.
So if there is further discussion, further discussion can be a reason to be why a motion is not immediately acted upon, is that correct? So further discussion would include an opportunity for the public to comment if they wish. There may not be any public comment.
I think once we vote on a motion, then they have a right to comment.
Because this is a vote on the amendment. This is voting just to make that amendment. Then if we approve that amendment, that's when discussion would open up, and there would be another vote on that as amended. But Mary, just to clarify, if we make that amendment, that is gonna need to go back to council. So we cannot move forward with it today.
I think that you, you need to move forward to call for the public hearing.
Okay.
And then the legal council can weigh in on this amendment, and the merits of that, and maybe come up with some additional.
Language, yeah, okay.
Is that?
That works for me.
So we would move now to a vote on the amendment, and after the amendment is passed, then there may be further discussion, and then after that discussion, vote on the motion as amended or not.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? No? Call the roll.
So this is on the amendment? And Deacon?
No.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
McCree?
No.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Four yes, two no. The motion carries.
Thank you. And so next, we haven't yet had any public comment? Is there any other public comment? No public comment? Any other council comment? I think, I'm sorry. Podium's high.
So this amendment, so I guess the question, I mean, you're gonna bring this back to the public hearing, but I, you know, I think in terms of going forward forever, in terms of somebody choosing where they're gonna be, I mean, that's, sounds like what. The reality is that you may end up at some point with one person in Area Two, who, actually in Area Two, who wants to be considered Area Three. I mean, in other words, time may move on, progress may move on, and they may be in an area that they're not really in.
Yeah, I think there may be other issues related to that, like is, does the district need to be contiguous, and, which hasn't been discussed heretofore. But how people choose, or how they're, the point, the particular dwelling is positioned, I think, whether something is contiguous or not with other parts of the district, might be something that the town attorney might have some comment to share with us. I don't know the answer to that question, but these are all things why a longer-term solution or a charter commission might be appropriate.
Anthony Folsom, 85, Delphoe Road. I believe in what Phil brought up, good points, but when you said something about a family, husband and wife, could there be two people that ran and end up at the, on the council or on the planning board, if you did it that way?
I think currently, a husband and wife cannot run for.
How he said it, he said if she wanted to run in District Two.
Say the next year, he wanted to run in one district, and she could run another. He could run for planning board, I guess, and she could run for council.
You couldn't be on the same board?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Yes, good question. Any other comments? No public or council comments? So what do we need to do now? Yeah, we have to make.
You need to vote on the order as amended, which will move it to public hearing with the proposed amendment incorporated into the referendum question by the town attorney. Now, do you, do you want to review, all of you review that prior to?
No.
I don't think, I don't need to. I mean, I think this is gonna solve the problem that you're looking at, Mary, and it would solve the problem of me not having to move in nature's way.
Because of, there's been an amendment, is this something, I think it might be appropriate to have the town attorney review it, to consider if there are any implications?
The town attorney will make the, include the recommendation.
So there's, there's an opportunity for the town attorney to do that?
Yes.
He, the attorney drafted this, he will make the, incorporate the amendment into it.
Right, and advise us if there were any issues with the amendment that we might need to address. Okay. Any other comment? No? Call the roll.
Okay, and this is the order as amended. And Mr. Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
McCree?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson? Yes.
Six yes.
Done everybody, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And then 62-24, accept resignation from recycling committee member. Order that the resignation of recycling committee member, Mary Chapman, submitted on June 3, 2024, is hereby accepted effective immediately.
I can't accept that. Sorry, Mary.
Who could ever replace that person?
We don't have to, we can all vote? No, and she has to stay, right?
You already have many things to do, and the things that you have to do never stop coming forward to you, dear. Litany of things to address, so I want to appreciate you and, on behalf of many, thank you for the many things that you have done and the many groups that you've been a part of. It's an awful lot of business to take care of, I understand. Are there any other council comments initially on this? Are there any public comments?
I had raised my hand, Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, thank you, Mary. You do so much already, and the fact that you choose to serve on boards amongst all the other things that you have to do is a gift to Standish, as always, and just thank you for your service.
Many of the employees do, so I thank you for your hard work.
A lot of the hats you wear are not seen by others, and it's well appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Now, do we have to move to a vote if there's no other public comment or council comment? Go ahead.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Reluctantly, yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
McCree?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Oh, it could be a no. Yes.
Watson?
Yes, yes, yes.
No? Yes.
Thank you very much.
I only got rid of it, right?
My face, I'm embarrassed there. Order number 63-24, town council appointment to various boards and committees. Orders that the following town council appointments are made through the dates given, and I will read the roster of people that actually have names. And I will read the roster of people that actually have names connected to them, if you'd like.
Should we make, I'm going to make a motion to waive the reading?
Second.
So, so I guess if we were moving forward with what's in the document, we need to make some, is this the order that we need to make the adjustments?
Um, I...
Or is it the next one?
Yes. However, the assessment review board candidate needs to be added.
All right.
Well, we can... Oh, no, no, you just, you want me to just go down through them? So, I think that we had a candidate that you interviewed this evening for that.
Yes.
And we can...
Claudia.
Yes, Ms. Claudia, we can move forward.
Yep.
So, I can add Claudia Morton to this?
Yes. I was looking for Claudia's last name.
Morton.
Just found, so thank you, Mary, as always.
That's for assessment review board?
That's correct. Assessment review board.
Should we present these as amendments?
Indeed, yep.
So, I make a motion to amend the order 63-24 to update the assessment review board, Claudia Morton.
Second.
Thank you.
Do we want to finish all the amendments before we...
Yep, yeah, why don't we add all the names? How's that?
Sorry.
And do you have a public safety committee member? Would that be Isabel?
I would like to amend the order by adding Isabel Higgins for the public safety committee. And an amendment to add Maury Hill as the Saco River Community TV Board of Directors.
And did you want to consider any of the standing committees?
Yes. And I don't know if we have opportunity to pause for additional discussion on that. But I think our concerns here are during the time of the council change for Personnel Committee, Ordnance Committee, Finance Committee, Capital Improvements, and the Appointments Committee. I will note that it appears that all of those committees will have two sitting members through that change. But I think if we wanted to even out those committees in the meantime, is there, you know, not to be a little informal, but would anyone like to volunteer for, to join Counselor Gardner and Watson on Personnel Committee? Is there any preference between our remaining three counselors?
Is there a need for a Personnel Committee meeting before their appointments are done?
We haven't had one all year, so I don't believe so.
I wouldn't see there being a need for that.
Okay, so we'll leave Personnel Committee. Ordnance currently sitting is Deacon and Watson. And Counselor Leclerc will be exiting. Will there be a meeting for Ordnance?
No meeting planned at this time.
Okay, so we'll move on. Finance Committee, we have Counselor Watson and myself. Counselor Leclerc exiting. Do you, we will have a meeting.
We will, but we can push it back a week if you'd like.
The chair here.
It's fine with me if we want to push it back a week and wait for the appointments, if that's okay with you. Is there nothing pressing?
No.
Okay.
So, let's get that. Economic Development, Ms. Counselor Gaba, Counselor Deacon and Parmelo. So, that one is all set. Capital Improvements, Counselor Macri will be exiting. Will there be a Capital Improvements meeting prior to the next?
Yes.
I think that's probably the more important one. Yeah. And so, so currently, it's Counselor Parmelo and Counselor Watson. So, either you or I or Bob could step up for that. Do you know?
I can do it if nobody else wants to.
When is the next meeting for Capital Improvements?
Capital is going to meet on July 9. They have a plague, a bonding question for...
And so, would July 9 work for you?
We have a council meeting, right?
Yeah, it's ahead of...
Yeah, it's usually at 5:00 for it.
No, I can do that.
Is there an appointments committee next month?
Yes.
Because that is also at 5:00 on that date, and you sit on the council. So, I guess that leaves Counselor Parmelo or Counselor Deacon for, or no. You're already there. So, Counselor Deacon, would you be able to sit on Capital Improvements for the next?
I believe so, yes.
All right. So, I would like to further amend the order to add Counselor Deacon to the Capital Improvements Committee until the new sitting council is able to make their appointments.
Do you think you can get by with two appointments?
I think we can get by with two members for Appointments Committee. And so, I think we can move forward to vote on the amendment.
Sure, and I'll recap the amendment. Claudia Morton for assessment review, Isabel Higgins for Public Safety Committee, and Maury Hill for the Saco River Community Board of Directors. And then Mr. Deacon on the Standing Committee, Capital Standing Committee.
Any comments by council members? I just have a comment that I'm concerned that there are some appointments for which there are no nominees and some groups, committees for which there have no recent nominees, such as Historic Preservation. If we're going to have a group such as Historic Preservation, we ought to address the issue of having nominees. To not have nominees and to continue to not have nominees is either an indication that the council lacks its duties or is just making an indirect decision that we don't need this group and shouldn't have it, and it should be abolished. So, I would suggest that, you know, for the short term, we can say, we don't know of anything that the Historic Preservation Committee might need to do. So, maybe we can get away with not having anyone there. But I would say it's very important for the council in the future to consider whether such a committee should exist. The same could have been said for the Cemetery Committee, which previously never had any members until I appointed two. It still hasn't met. There is some argument that could be made that the committee is not necessary because it's not meeting regularly. Not to have members appointed, I think begs the question of, does the Historical Commission, Preservation Commission need to exist or not? We don't necessarily have to decide this now. I'm just making my point that I believe in the long term, we should not have committees for which there are no members. And we should either appoint members or not have such a group because it's not needed.
Mr. Deacon, I would like to resign as Chair of the Cemetery Committee that you appointed me to, that I never asked to be on anyways. So, if you're going to keep bringing this up about the Cemetery Committee, have at it. You're the one that appointed me to this committee that I didn't even ask to be on because it was a way to get back at me a bit about other stuff. So, I will formally resign from the Cemetery Committee so we don't have to keep going back and forth, you and I. How's that sound?
You're welcome.
That's, we don't need, I'm just telling you I'm resigning.
You're welcome to take your action.
We don't need this going back and forth, you and I.
We're, we're discussing the Cemetery Committee, I don't believe is...
You brought up the Cemetery Committee.
Right, but is it a part of this particularly? Is it germane to this matter?
Can we move forward with, we had an amendment?
You have an amendment.
To this, to this motion. Can we move forward with that?
And so, the amendment had...
Second it now?
I think it moved and seconded. It moved and seconded so we can have a show of hands to vote on the amendment.
All those in favor of the amendment? Unanimous?
Thank you. And then a motion, you want to move the question as amended?
If there's no other discussion, we can move the motion as amended.
You got a question.
Public comment, please.
Is this on both of the items? The Cemetery and...
You have to go up to the podium, ma'am.
The Cemetery, I'll just put my resignation here.
No, the, the, the order that we're reviewing right now are all the appointments. So, that includes your appointment to, to the Board of Assessment Review. So, it would be at this point that we would vote on the order as amended to include your name and the other folks this evening who had shown up to volunteer their time for, for the town.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're ready to move to a vote on the amended item? Please call a roll.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order number 64-24, confirmation of town manager's appointment to various town positions. Orders that the following town manager's appointments are confirmed through the date given. Robert Karen, Director of Public Safety, that's the Fire Chief and EMS Chief, through June 30, 2025. James Paul, Code Enforcement Officer, through June 30, 2025. James Paul, Building Inspector, through June 30, 2025. James Paul, Local Plumbing Inspector, through June 30, 2025. James Paul, Electra, Inspector, excuse me, through June 30, 2025. Jaclyn Dyer, Code Enforcement Officer, Alternate, through June 30, 2025. Further orders that the following town Fire Chief nominations are confirmed by the town manager. Is the Animal Control Officer, through June 30, 2025. Excuse me, William Watson, Animal Control Officer, Alternate, through June 30, 2025. And Robert Karen, Harbor Master, through June 30, 2025.
Are there any comments about this? No public comments? Any council comments?
With Counselor Leclerc not here, I think it's my understanding, you know, for the Appointments Committee, that the town manager makes these appointments really as a matter of business. And then the committee moves it forward at the council meeting. So, these are essentially the town manager's appointments.
Yes. My son is Director of Public Safety and also Harbor Master, so I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? None? Move to a vote?
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Mr. Parmelo?
I'll abstain.
Thank you. Watson?
Yes.
Five yes, one abstain. The next order is 65-24, confirmation of Town Clerk's appointment of Election Warden. Order that the, order that the Town Clerk's appointment of Sandra Osterreiter to serve as Election Warden through June 30, 2025, is confirmed by the town council.
Any comments about Election Warden? None from the public, any from the council?
I think, again, with Counselor Leclerc absent, I'll just jump in that this is just, again, a matter of business so that we can have an election clerk, which is necessary for our election. So, we thought Sandra Osterreiter, who's served many, many, many elections, as far as I know.
Thank you. If there's no other comment, move to, call a roll.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order number 66-24, approve renewal of waste hauler licenses. Order that the following waste hauler license application renewals, upon approval of the Director of Public Works, are approved by the council to expire June 30, 2025. Casella Waste, RW Herrick, Toriano Waste Services Incorporated, and Waste Management of Portland. And the Public Works Director has signed off on all of the applications.
Are any of those businesses here want to make any comment? None are present? Other public comment? Any council comment? No comment being seen. Can move to call a roll.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order number 67-24, authorize Finance Director to issue municipal quick claim deed to Nathan Arvalo J. and Karo Carlton Nathan. That is MAP 13, Lot 7, Sub Lot A. Whereas the sole purpose of the...
Make a motion to waive the reading?
I'll second it. Motion to waive the reading? All those in favor to waive the reading? Unanimous? Thank you. Any discussion of this item from the public? Any discussion by the...
We could allow Counselor Watson to introduce the order.
Sorry, thank you, go ahead.
Yeah, this is just, we're just releasing for a quick claim deed. And if you need to say anything, Scott, that's it.
Just a normal piece of business when we get paid for a piece of town-owned property. Expropriate property.
Thank you for sharing that. No public comment? Any other council comment? No public or council comment? We're ready to call a roll.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order number 68-24, adopt amendments to the town of Standish personnel policy. Order that the Standish, the town of Standish hereby adopts the following amendments to the town of Standish personnel policy effective immediately upon adoption. The personnel policy of the town of Standish shall be amended as follows. Additions are underlined, and deletions are struck out. Excuse me, full, regular full-time employees working 38 hours per week or otherwise specified are eligible to participate in health and dental insurance package as provided by the town of Standish. The town will pay 90% of the premiums for health insurance and 75% of the premiums for dental insurance for coverage of each regular full-time employee or other employees as contractually obligated. The town finance coverage, the town finance coverage shall be limited to these insurance plans. Participants may purchase supplemental or dependent coverage through these plans at their own expense with 50% paid by the employee and 50% paid by the town. The percentage paid by the town may change from time to time depending on the insurance rates. Insurance will begin the first, begin the first of the next month after completing 30 days of employment. Regular employees who work 30 to 38 hours per week will have access to prorated benefits.
I'm going to refer to Scott.
This is just a housekeeping item with a change to the personnel policy for our insurance. So, we updated the policy.
Thank you.
So, is, is the change from the, the town will pay, is reducing the amount that they're paying towards the premiums for the health insurance for employees? Is that dictated by the insurance policy itself?
It's dictated by the rates that came in this year. The market was really bad this year. Came in about 20% increase.
I will say that...
As we've seen in years.
I experienced the, the same at my employment, just, just to let folks know.
To stay within budget.
Yeah.
Yes, Ben?
So, what happens here on out? Because it, it says it's 90%, but then, then the other line that has been added is that that percentage may change. So, are we saying that it's not going to be 90% next year? We're going to wait and see what the rates are? And that's going to depend what the percentage is? Or...
Saying that it's a possibility that the rate may have to change dictated by the market. It's not going, it's still going to be 90%, if that has to come up again, that we're putting people on notice.
Okay, so it, it won't necessarily be a change. Let's say next year, we're only going to pay 85%. Would we come back and change that number from 90 to 85?
Correct.
Okay, so...
That would need to come back in front of the council. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff, we're just concerned when looking at this that it's at a hundred percent and we need to reflect what it was doing. We are hiring a few more employees, so we could be over fifty, so it's likely if we are over fifty, it would change again and we hope for the better. But our agent told us with COVID claims, instead of saying what stage one cancer, unfortunately people had stage three, the cost of mental health has gone up and the cost of prescription drugs, so it was twenty to forty percent higher. And we looked at a whole host of, so I mean, we felt like, instead of putting it all on the taxpayers to have employees have a little buy-in too. Ninety percent is still pretty good, so we're, we're going to look at it every year, but this little line will help us to say like, we're looking, but we're going to do the best we can.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Other comments? Public comments? Is there any town employees that want to comment? We can move to a vote.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Order number sixty-nine dash twenty-four, emergency amendment to Standish Town Code, Chapter 263, Vehicles and Traffic, Article One, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Section 263 dash three, Weight Restrictions. Whereas the Public Works Director has observed signs that the culvert at the crossing of Strope Brook located between 640 and 689 Middle Road is, is in danger of failing, which could result in a sinkhole in the roadway. And whereas this section of Middle Road is located between Boundary Road and the end of the paved portion of Middle Road at the intersection with Hope Avenue, and, Hope Avenue, Wheaton Way End, whereas after consulting with the Main Department of Transportation, the Public Works Director has recommended that the above referenced section of Middle Road be posted to twenty-two tons to protect the safety of the traveling public. And whereas these circumstances constitute an emergency necessitating adoption of the emergency amendment at the meeting which it is introduced. Now therefore, the Town of Standish hereby ordains the following emergency amendment to Chapter 263 to be effective June 4th, 2024, which emergency amendment shall stand automatically repealed as of the ninety-first day following adoption. Underlines, additions are underlined and deletions are struck out. Article One, Parking and Weight Restrictions, Section 263 dash three, Weight Restrictions. This is adding temporarily, Section H, Middle Road from Boundary Road to the end of the paved portion of Middle Road shall be closed to vehicles having a gross weight of twenty-two tons or more.
Thank you. Any other comment about this issue?
Sunday, I was called about a sinkhole in the culvert. We have temporarily patched it, repaired it. I sent you pictures of the condition of the culvert. It's in very poor shape. We have met with engineering up there. We are working on a plan on applying for a stream grant, hopefully. We are talking, still trying to get it replaced this coming year, hopefully. Something, once we know finance numbers, will be coming to you.
So when they, we had significant rains in March, for example, and other portions of the state were severely affected. Is this when this developed or something? Can we tell or no?
We, we can't tell what we can do. I can say engineering's concern is if we have a major rain event. So what's causing the sinkhole is water is running outside around the culvert, which is taking the material downstream. So somewhere, it's, we just can't patch it or whatever because it's got multiple holes and no bottom to it right now. So it's just, that's the concern is, but I can't tell you when it happened or...
I was hoping, wondering if there was any way to claim it as part of that other set of emergencies that might yield some other source of funding.
I don't believe so. If you look at the shit, the condition of the culvert is basically what's causing it. There is no bottom.
So it's long-term erosion of the, of the culvert itself?
Right.
I see. I don't want to belay this, but I would hope that because of such events of excessive rain and flooding, that we have some way of identifying or checking these potential areas so that sinkholes don't develop suddenly and not be noticed and cause some public safety issue. Just throwing that out, I'm sure you're, you're aware of what you need to do, but just hope that you're able to keep ahead of that.
We're working on it.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Ben?
So just to get an idea, I, I live on this road. I drive over this every day, almost. Twenty-two tons. Can you talk about what vehicles would be over twenty-two tons that would not be allowed on this road?
So like, this is still allows fuel trucks, school buses to still go over that rating type of deal. Basically, a little bit larger than a single axle. When I say single axle, one rear axle truck that's loaded.
Okay, so dump trucks? If, if somebody was, was working on building a house or something, can a dump truck excavator go through?
If there was a single axle dump, a fully loaded wheeler dump truck would be over the twenty-two tons.
Okay. And there is no exceptions for construction at this point or things like that? It's, this is what it's got to be or else there's fear that it could, it could go.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. John, I just want you to know, we got you back here in the council and do what you got to do. And if you got to take money out of reserve or something, we'll figure it out because if it's a sinkhole, it's not going to get better, obviously. And I wish you'd have climbed in the culvert like twenty feet and get another couple pitches. I was hoping to see you in there a little deeper, but in hindsight, I, I think it's something, it's used a lot. There must be, what, thirty, forty houses in there, Ben?
I'd say thirty houses beyond the culvert.
I would definitely say we don't want to do any type of knee jerk. We want to do it right.
I agree.
I just want you to know that you need to come, if you need to do it right, let's do it and get it over with as soon as you can because I truly believe you've got the support of the council.
Engineering's already working on it. Met with them today up there.
Do you know the weight of the fire trucks? Is there any public safety concern that fire trucks wouldn't be able to access?
I don't, a lot of them are single axles, so I guess there's the, meaning they're in between thirty-two and thirty-six thousand pounds, somewhere around there.
The ladder truck wouldn't be able to get down in there. Our ladder truck would definitely be over that. There's a few in town that wouldn't get down.
Is there an alternate entrance, alternate approach?
There, it's not, it's an abandoned town road. It is, you can come through either A, coming up through the section if we got permission from across from the outpost, but it turns into where the town abandoned Middle Road and it's not in the best of shape. I mean, it's not just grading it to make it in good shape to be able to go through with cars. Could a fire truck probably drive through it? Yes, as long as it's not mud season or something of that.
Again, I, I, I hope we never get to that point. I'm just trying to raise a out-of-the-box thought that we think about it and there is a, at least that alternative route available so that if necessary, we're aware of that. Thank you. Any other council comments? Public comments? Yes?
I know John knows all about this, but is there, are there any sources of emergency funding for dealing with that or...
The town manager actually reached out to our local representatives. Like I said, we are not applying for a stream grant. We actually got lucky this year. Usually they only open it once a year. They opened it twice this year, but there, I asked, already reached out to Maine DOT to see if we could expedite, hey, can we put in? This is how bad a shape it is. Any chance we could do something? They told us, no, we have to follow the process if we were to get that grant.
Thank you for asking though.
Thank you. Any other public comment? None? Any other council comment? If none, move to a vote.
Deacon?
Yes.
Gaba?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Macri?
Yes.
Parmelo?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Six yes. Thank you very much.
Next item?
Public items?
Are there any public items?
I just wanted to say that I've been over on the Gil Fern Road and it looks like there's been a lot of flooding over there. A lot of property damaged, a lot of water in people's basements. And I don't know, I think, you know, those houses were built about twenty years ago. So it may be that that, you know, I, I don't know what perk testing was done on those, on that development, but it looks like it's a real mess now. So I don't know, John, if you've had any discussion with those folks or...
I have talked to the homeowners. Part of the issue is the drainage easements are supposed to be maintained by the development and the drainage is not in the town right of way. So it's not up to the town to maintain that drainage based on when the subdivision plans were approved. I know there, there is an elderly lady, which I feel for her, her pumps run non-stop and the water table's super high. She shouldn't have had a full basement in her house, but I mean, it's sort of beyond our control of what the town can do.
Most people have that, actually. We talked about that. The, most subdivisions are required to maintain their own drainage easement and most people don't know that. So I think anyone listening or even anyone here, you should check because you probably are supposed to be on our nod.
Yep. What, what happens like if the development goes out of business or, you know, a developer...
It goes back to the homeowners. It's the homeowners that are in that development. It's not the, it's not the developer that's still responsible.
So it's the homeowners who are responsible, yeah. Yeah, I, I just was quite concerned, you know, to hear about that because that's such a major...
We do have, what is the agency that helps seniors to stay in their home? The Fuller?
Agency on Aging, the...
The Fuller House? No.
Fuller Center, I think.
Yeah. There, there are resources if that lady needs some help. We had, we've given them, we made a donation to them one year. They help people stay in their house. They build porches and stuff, but I bet they would help with drainage problems.
Sure, I think this other main agency on aging also, you know, gives grants and, you know, financial assistance to folks to age in place, so that might be something that she might be able to...
No, when I spoke with that particular woman, she said that she's trying to get her house ready to sell. And because she's moving into another condo, condo here in Standish and, you know, that will really impact the resale of that house. And it, and it looked like it wasn't just her house, it was a number of them in that development. So anyway, I just bring that up. The other thing is, is, you know, in terms of the Historical Society, the, you know, the district or whatever, and then related to that, I guess, the cemeteries, is I don't know if there, I don't know what the coherent plan is in terms of Standish and the cemeteries. I don't know if Standish, I, I missed that discussion before in terms of...
We have an intern working on a list of cemeteries and their needs and I want to say there's over sixty-ish and we're on number forty.
Sixty-three.
Yeah, so we have someone looking at it.
So is the Historical Society involved with the cemeteries too or is that a whole separate thing?
Yeah. I think from what, at least what I've learned over the past couple of years is that each cemetery is kind of a different entity. Some of them have their own nonprofits, some of them are under the town's purview, some of them are on Portland Water District land and not being cared for by Portland Water District. So I think really from what I understand the town is doing is really trying to take an inventory of that so that they can make a plan to move forward. But I think first we have to know what we have.
Yep, good assessment, yep. Thank you. I was just, I didn't understand what those implications were. Thank you.
Are these properties that were mentioned within the floodplain that we were talking about, the new definition and designation of floodplain?
I'm not sure. I don't, haven't reviewed it, to be honest with you.
So in order to get flood insurance, you don't necessarily have to be in the floodplain. Anybody can apply for flood insurance. So I'm just sharing to the general public that if you feel your, you would benefit from flood insurance, it is your ability to secure flood insurance and there is that public process if you want to come and review the map. The map right now is available at the town offices. Later, I am told that a digital copy may be available online for people to review. So if you think you're concerned about climate change, climate disaster, flooding, anything of that type, you may want to look further into flood insurance. Anything else? No other public items or announcements?
I do have an announcement. I would like to thank Mr. Gregory Leclerc and Mr. Benjamin Macri for their time on the town council, the years that they've served. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'd like to also thank people who serve on any other committee in the town as well as the council. Public service takes a commitment, a dedication, an effort. It's not easy in terms of yourself, your family, or your work sometimes. I do thank everyone that's served on every town board and committee this year and past years. We, we have very great town employees, but it's the work of these committees and their elected and appointed members that also do great service to the town. I want to thank all of them as well as the council members. Thank you. Any other announcements?
Make the motion, we adjourn.
A second.
If there's no opposition, all those in favor adjournment? Motion carried? No?
Paperwork to sign, everybody.